Good evening. It's Tuesday, April 23rd, and this is the Stoughton City Council meeting. And the first order of business would be the road call.
Okay, Caravelo.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Lagaki.
Here.
Mijaski.
Here.
Peyton.
Disoriented, but here.
Was next, Galen. Reeves.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Okay, we have ten Alders present. Sherlocki is absent and excused.
All right, thank you. We are in certification of compliance with open meeting laws. And item number three is public comment. And we had one person that signed up just in support of item number seven, but they weren't signed up to speak. So just so you're aware of that. And seeing nobody else for public comment, we'll move on to communications and presentations. And we'll start with the clerk.
Okay, also we're in our new Alder, Sarah Abel. And then we have Christina also to swear in. Sarah is taking District Four. We did a brief recount of the write-ins, and she came out with a couple of votes for her position and accepted. So we'll give hers sworn in, along with Christina.
If you could raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me stating your name.
I, Christina Sarah Abel, having been elected the office of alderperson.
Having been elected the office of alderperson.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, while everybody's getting settled, I'll announce a few things. So it is volunteer week. And as you know, we have many amazing volunteers in the city of Stoughton. And we had a ceremony at the fire station last Friday for our annual Volunteers of the Year, which included John Elvichro, Sam Eifert, the Friend of Youth was Scott Fernholtz and Troy Weezer. And the Business of the Year was Heather North from Northern Compass Boutique. We had a little gathering. They were giving their plaque and proclamations. And their names are in the in the city hall and the meeting room on the wall there. So if you're ever in there for a meeting, you'll see all the names of folks that have been Volunteers of the Year. In your packet, you're going to see numerous proclamations. In May, we have Municipal Clerks Week, National Public Works Week, Public Service Recognition, Public Safety Fellow Communicators Week, Mental Health Month, Drinking Water Week. And recently, we had Line Workers Day. And there's probably a few that I missed. I think there's one for teachers and one for healthcare workers as well. So typically, when you get into late April and into May, we have multiple proclamations for various public works people and volunteers in the community. So I wanted to mention all those tonight. Are there any communications from Alders? Alderperson Lagaki?
It is that season. June. June has saved the date. Just trying to make you aware, June 8th, there's going to be a pride celebration sponsored by an informal group, as well as the Stoughton Library. That will mostly be the daytime. And from 1:00 till 4:00 on June 23rd is going to be the June 16th celebration. That at United Methodist as of this time. And just want, if you can make any of that, feel free to drop into any and all. June 8th, June 23rd.
Hearing no other communications from Alders, we'll go to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that are fairly routine. So we put them on there so we can approve them kind of in a batch, just for the sake of efficiency. And we can always pull an individual item out if there's questions on the consent agenda. Having said that, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
No move.
Motion? Motion to approve the consent agenda by Jensen, a second by Alder Mijaski. Would anybody like anything acted on separately? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. And the next item would be the Ordinance Number Six of 2024. This is a second reading from the Plan Commission. And on the ordinances, we typically do two readings. The first reading is to introduce the ordinance and then answer any initial questions that we would have. And then we typically do a second reading at the next meeting to approve the ordinance. So that's kind of the processes that we use for the ordinances. And they usually come out of the committees. So this one here came out of the Plan Commission, which would be Alderperson Caravelo. I'm looking on the wrong side of the room.
I'm here now. Yes, thank you. This is Ordinance Six of 2024, annexing certain city-owned land located within the town of Dunkirk. And I so move.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by... All right, second by Pete. And Alderperson Caravelo, anything you want to cover on this one? I know we talked about it at the last meeting.
Yep, this is just as we talked about previously, a piece of property that the city acquired at 2464 County Highway A that is in the town of Dunkirk that we would like to be in the city of Stoughton to make in addition to racetrack park.
All right, does anybody have any questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. New business, Ordinance Number Seven of 2024. So this is being introduced as a first reading. And this one came from the Public Safety Committee. And that would be Alderperson Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance Seven of 2024, amending Chapter Six to allow the keeping of miniature pigs in city-owned property. And this is the first reading. And I'll try and answer any questions.
So basically, this one here was brought to our attention by some potential residents of Stoughton initially. And then we received that communication from a resident. And they would like us to have the ability to have pet pigs here in Stoughton. And we worked with, through the committee process, gathered data from other municipalities to verify and understand what they have in their ordinances. Went through the committee. We have a recommendation. The recommendation was approved by legal counsel. And this is here for a first reading. Anything you want to add, Attorney Manthe?
No, I think the ordinance is fairly straightforward. Basically, we just made some amendments to the ordinances to change them to specifically provide for miniature pigs that are under 200 pounds. Happy to answer any questions.
President Reeves?
So if the if the animal is over 200 pounds, someone complains about it, would that be up to our police department to intervene?
Yes, at that point, it would be an ordinance violation. I mean, it'd be the same thing as like having a pig right now, I guess, where we put the onus on them to having to demonstrate that the pig is under 200 pounds. But there is the enforcement question, right? Like, you either cite them. That's really the basic way that you would enforce it, is to issue them a citation.
Any follow-up or any other questions? Alderperson Schumacher.
I guess I'm just a little bit hesitant on it. I mean, just because of the nature of those animals and getting fairly large, like... I think that that puts sort of a strange obligation on the police department for that. I mean, you know, I suppose it isn't anything unlike any other any other domesticated animal. But this one's a little, is a little different. Like, how do we, or when does it? Do they have, or would they have to have, like, several ordinance violations before they would be forced to remove? If to remove the animal? What if neighbors aren't satisfied with the result out of it? I don't know.
Yes, so the way that I envision this, I mean, it's sort of like how we would handle a zoning ordinance violation. So first, you send the warning letter, 30 days to remove. If it, if they haven't removed it, then you issue them citations. If you have multiple convictions, you can sort of step it up a notch as far as like legal proceedings go, which you don't really want to do, right? You would hope that the forfeitures would be the enough financial incentive to remove the pig. I mean, there was the issue in Madison, right? I think last year, where got a lot of attention. But yeah, that... Because I don't see us like taking possession of the animal necessarily. But the best way to enforce would be the citations. And then if not, like I said, you can step it up by going to like circuit court. Try to avoid that, if at all possible. But it's similar to how we would enforce a zoning ordinance violation.
Good, okay. Alderperson Hirsch.
What I was reading on, why are they called min-pigs or mini-pigs? That their maximum weight supposedly is 150 pounds? And yes, I know that, you know, like all animals and humans, we might be overweight. So that's why I'm glad that you put that 50 extra pounds for, you know...
Holidays.
Holiday weight. But I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I'm just, you know, as long as there's not any human health problem with having a pig indoors. I think they do have different parasites and everything that can be passed on to humans. That's my only concern. If they're go through the vet, I mean, have public safety? Did you like get a vet kind of recommendation? Or anything like that?
It is their responsibility to make sure that the animal is cared for, vet with a vet and so on. I don't remember if we... I know we talked about it. DJ, weren't you talking about something on? Yeah, maybe you had some more information on that.
On veterinarians?
Yeah. Weren't you going to be looking into that for us?
So there is, there is not a veterinarian in town. But there are veterinarians throughout Madison who do administer certain levels of vaccines. But unlike with dogs and other domesticated pets that we register and oversee a little bit more closely with the city or even through Madison, they still do have some benchmarks that they, as owners, can meet. And vets can, they can take their pets too. But just like any other pet, it's up to the owner's care to make sure that they're taking care of them. But there are resources out there that exist for miniature pigs because it is a, it's a slow, it's a niche market of a pet. And we're approaching this and the discussion with Public Safety kind of came up because we didn't have anything about it. There are a lot of cities in the packet. I think it had shown some areas that did have pet ordinances related to miniature pigs that have developed over the course of a few, the last five or so years, maybe a little bit longer. So it's not unheard of. It's not irregular. Well, maybe it's a little irregular because there are only so many. But it is growing a bit. So we're trying to stay on top of a curb of pets that are going to be seen likely within the town and maybe even people who'd be interested to come to Stoughton because they know we have allowances for it and we distinguish them from domesticated farm animals.
Can I have a follow-up? I mean, I know we have dog licenses. Are we expected to have pig licenses? I mean, is there any concerns with rabies or anything like that? Or, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how we keep a handle on how many pigs are in the city and if there is a problem or outbreak that, you know...
Yeah, we had a lot of discussion of that at the committee about whether to license, whether to register, a few other things around it. We molded over for quite a while before we came down with these ordinances that then were reviewed and then became the current draft. But, you know, in one way, dogs are licensed, but cats aren't necessarily in town. And they both pose a similar, you know, outdoor, indoor, depending on how you take care of your cat. So there's a little difference. They should not be. That is, that is true. But owners are as owners are. Anyway, regardless, there are similar types of animals that we're looking at are managed a little bit differently. So pigs fell under the area we thought after discussion that they shouldn't be licensed at this time. Whether they will be in the future, that's open for discussion. And we can always amend the ordinance to provide new stipulations.
Did you have a, I knew I'd say that. I told you I'd say that. Did I say six times? Did you have a follow-up?
No, no, this time I'll let President Reeves.
Let's do that.
Ask her a question.
I'll share what I shared with the Public Safety Committee. And it's been a while since I've visited. So I do plan to reach out to them again. But I visited just as an interested neighbor, the Heartland Farm Sanctuary. And they have a lot of, in fact, I think they're maxed on their rescued pigs because mini-pigs are not, they're not regulated just like any other animal breeders. Even people with good intentions breed these pigs and they end up being 300, 400, 500 pounds. So then they have a situation where everyone's heartbroken and there's nowhere for this animal to go except, you know, sometimes, you know, if they're lucky, they'll go to a sanctuary. So that's my biggest concern. I love animals. I would hate to have someone have to be in this situation. So I'm, I'm going to circle back with Heartland just to, you know, I'd love for them to come and chat with us to give some sort of expert advice about some of their medical needs and that sort of thing. So I'm going to reach out and see if they might be willing. Because I'd like us to make an informed decision. I mean, I'd love these little things to have a home, but they may not be little. And then everybody's, it's just, you know, and then the neighbors are complaining potentially because they dig. I mean, these animals are fabulous, but they, you know, they dig and they can make a big mess under the, you know, and get the neighbors. I mean, it's just, it could be a problem. And I'm just not sure we have enough information to make a good decision. So I'm hoping I can ask them to come and visit. And then maybe we can, between now and the next meeting.
In your packet, you'll see, through the research I did on the PowerPoint, and really, the common theme was is the municipalities that had pigs really haven't experienced any problems. But no offense, Candy, they did say, stay away from goats. Candy raises goats. Because they can, they can get out and run and they're hard to track them down. The pigs are a little bit easier to catch if they escape. Yeah. But the communities I talked to said they really haven't had any issues. But obviously, that would be a concern. So I decided to share that part. And unfortunately, the folks that are really advocating for it, they had to work tonight. So hopefully, they can make the next meeting. And they are, I would say, are, have a lot more expertise on the topic than I pretend to.
Just a quick comment, if I could. I just want to thank the council for discussing this tonight because this is what we had to do for probably three meetings, three, four meetings before we came up with this. So it was not an easy decision. We wanted to help the people out. We thought it was a pretty good idea to bring it forward to the council. So I'm glad that we're having this discussion. And I'm very much open to any other, any other information anybody can bring to the council.
This is like our infamous chickens and bees discussion.
Any other questions or comments? Or if you think of any additional information you'd like to have for the next meeting, you can let me know and we can try to provide that for you. Otherwise, this would be back at the next meeting. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. And that would be Resolution 64 of 2024. And that one is coming from the Finance Committee. And before you introduce it, Rick, can you help me explain what a resolution is? I know it's a lot of words. And a whereas's and therefore's.
Yeah, I mean, there's the ordinance, which is you're, you're creating a law, right? It's enforceable. A resolution is basically a, could be a statement of policy or a position statement by the city or based, or saying that it's going to do certain action or directing people to do certain actions. So an ordinance is, has the force of law. A resolution is just directing certain types of action or a proclamation or something like that. So it's a little less formal, but it gives direction to various city officials.
Great, thank you. And we use that so we can create a paper trail. So if we ever have to go back and find something, it's a lot easier to find a resolution than it is to find a motion or to sometimes take three minutes. And then one of the things the clerks do is they, they handle taking care of all of our documentation and our files. So they have a system set up to do that. Right? They do. They're very organized in the clerk's office. All right, having said all that, this came from Finance. Thanks for your patience. Alderperson Schumacher.
This is Resolution 64, 2024. The resolution authorizing and directing the proper city official to write off 2019 to 2023 delinquent personal property tax bills that have proven to be uncollectible totaling $1,738.45. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second by Jensen. Alderperson Schumacher.
We talked about this in committee a little bit. This comes up time to time. You see, it's, it's got a fairly wide year range in there, variety of different things. And we talked about other ways that we might be able to try and get to some of this money that was owed for, for the taxes. But sometimes, there's a, there's a cost benefit to it that it might take more time in order to, like, for instance, you know, you've got a dollar and 29 cent one in there. I don't know if that's even worth staff time to go after. But we'll, we'll still keep an eye out for other ways that we can possibly get at some of this money owed in taxation.
All right, any questions or comments? Alderperson Hirsch.
I mean, some of these are just so minute amount of monies. How do people not have paid that? Do they not get their yearly, is it a yearly tax bill? And they just don't pay the full amount? Or, I mean, it just seems odd that you would not pay $2,193 of a tax bill.
Go ahead, Dave.
The businesses on the resolution are actually out of business or have moved out of the city limits. So it, I can understand why a company won't pay a tax bill if they're not allowed or don't have the cash flow to stay in business.
Right, but I think some of these businesses might still be in town. They just moved their physical location.
It's our understanding that they moved physically out of the city of Stoughton. They might be in town of Dunkirk or something like that. But we are not aware of them moving from whatever, Fourth Street to Eighth Street or anything like that.
Okay. It just seems weird. Some of these are just odd numbers.
Yeah, I think on some of them, maybe there's like interest charges or things like that that might have been tacked on there that create a weird number.
And the dollar values are actually only the city share. The Tech College School District and County have already been, the paperwork's already been submitted to get the write-off amount back from those tax jurisdictions. So this is just our portion of it.
All right, that makes a little bit more sense why you got weird numbers.
And just a quick note on this. I believe the personal property tax has been eliminated. So this would hopefully be the last year you have to do this type of resolution. So hopefully, the last.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next one is also from Finance. This is R 65. Alderperson Schumacher.
All right, this is R 65 of 2024, a resolution to amend the 2024 adopted budget for street construction projects, contract one, two, and three. So moved.
Second.
Mayor, you're going to want to put the revised one up on the screen.
All right, I think this is it. All right, it's a motion and a second by Alderperson, or President Reeves. Alderperson Schumacher.
I'm going to let Dave go through this one so that because you're going to see a different resolution up there on the screen, which is the one that we will be using and not the one that you can see probably on your screen. So the dollar values changed just a little bit from calculation, recalculation of it. But I'll have Dave go through so that the details are clear.
And one minor correction in the last whereas on this page, the word decreases should be changed to decrease, past tense. This morning, I got an email from Brian Hoops at Stoughton Utilities that the allocation of the contract number two between the Stoughton Utilities and the city changed slightly. So the numbers in red on this resolution and then the accompanying budget amendment detail on the next page are the numbers that changed.
All right, any questions or comments about that? Or anything you want to add, Director Abir?
Yeah, so the reason why the numbers changed is Stone Utilities and the city, we have an agreement for shared projects where we share in the costs of things like traffic control, road control, and things like that on shared projects. So those numbers reflect what Stone Utilities portion was that actually gives the city a net benefit in our, in our project costs.
Okay. Anything you want to add, Jill? You're good? Okay. All right, any other questions or comments from Alders? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, next item is, let's see, Resolution 66, I believe. Does that sound right?
Mm-hmm.
And this one also came from Finance. Alderperson Schumacher.
This is Resolution 66 of 2024, a resolution authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into an agreement with Rock Road Companies Incorporated of Janesville, Wisconsin for the 2024 street and utility construction on West South Street, also known as Contract 2-2024. So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Butler. Alderperson Schumacher.
All right, and this one to go through the change... All right, and this one to go through the changes or the details over this one, I will have Director Abir.
Yeah, Tim, was there another one from Stone Utilities in the packet on this one?
Yes.
Yep, yep. So this, okay, so this is the one that we need to use. I'm not sure if there needs to be an amendment to use this one. This one reflects the dollars that we talked about in the previous resolution from Finance. So I'm not sure procedurally, Rick, if we need to go back to the first one and remove that one in favor of this one.
What we did is we put both resolutions in there because when we did the packet, we were uncertain which one to use, and I think they have the same number on them.
Yeah, so I think we could just specify the dollar amounts.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, so the fiscal impact in this one is correct at $602,995.73 for Stone Utilities and $1,015,937.65 for the city of Stoughton. That is correct.
Okay. Anything else you want to elaborate on?
Yep, so this one is, we went out for bid on this one. We did have, right here, we did have, I believe this, we had five responsible bidders on this one. And Rock Road Companies was the low bidder, and we have worked with them before. This is a letter from Strand, also vetting them out and recommending that we approve this contract with Rock Road. I should step back. This is for West South Street from Page to Van Buren, and this is a full reconstruct. Any questions on this project?
And when would you anticipate these beginning?
As soon as we approve these contracts. We're hoping that this one gets started in mid-May.
All right, any questions or comments from elders? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. And the next one is R 67. That one also came from Finance.
This is R 67, 2024. A resolution authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into an agreement with Wolf Paving and Excavating Incorporated for the 2024 street pulverization work on Greig Trail and Johnson Street, also known as Contract 3-2024. So moved.
Second.
Second by President Reeves. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, I will have Director Abir cover this one also to make sure that we've got the dollar values in there correctly.
Yep, this one is correct. This one is a pulverization project on Greig Trail from Lincoln to Van Buren, and then also on Johnson Street from Rovey to Page. There's some minor Sony utility work. The lion's share of it is pavement replacement, spot curb and gutter replacement, apron replacement, and spot sidewalk replacement. So we have worked with Wolf Paving, who was the apparent low bidder. And we've had good luck with them in the past of working with them. We've got, like we have this, we have four bidders that were responsible, but Wolf was the lowest responsible bidder.
All right. And can you just give us an overview of what polarization means?
Yep, so basically we go in and we grind the asphalt down to the base material. Then we have a chance to reshape the grade and create a slope on the roadway. Also, we have the opportunity to do what we call an undercut, undercut. And so we look for soft spots in the base material. If we do have soft spots, we have the opportunity to remove that and put new base material back in. At that time, we also do spot curb and gutter replacement and spot sidewalk replacement. Then aprons get replaced as well. So it's a relatively quick process, but it's more invasive than, say, a milling overlay. So we like doing these here in stone because we have a lot of clay base material that we like to get out of there or remove and put more favorable base material back in. Any questions in that process?
Yeah, so the base is that cement?
No, the base is rock.
Rock.
So usually it's, yeah, three-inch rock and then three-quarter inch to one and a quarter, one and a quarter inch rock over the top of that. A lot of times, if you have clay-like materials, over time, that rock goes into the clay or there wasn't enough base material on top of the clay. So you get soft spots or rutting. So we have a pretty good idea from soil samples where those are. But we do proof rolls, is what we call them, to make sure we find all of them and get those taken out and replaced. And basically, that gives us a good road for a long, long time to come.
All right, and how about the purpose of the crown?
Yep, to shed water off the roadway. When it comes to asphalt, water's our enemy. So we want to get water to the curb and gutter as quickly as possible and efficiently as possible and get that into our system. So if water gets into the cracks in the base material, I mean, Wisconsin with our freeze-thaw cycles, that just deteriorates our asphalt pretty quickly and lessens the life of our roadways.
All right, thank you for the explanation. Did I see a question? I saw somebody flinch over there. Maybe not. You're cold? All right. Alder Person Schumacher does.
Brett, with these road, with the road construction projects and that in there, could you touch on like what you use as that, the Pacer rating?
Yeah, yeah. So each, every two years, we have to rate our roadways. And so we, one through 10 is our Pacer ratings. A 10 is a brand-new road essentially, and one is failing. And so we rate our roads and then we use that data to actually, you know, put our program together for replacement. So it's actually dictated that we do this by the DOT for funding. So we have a pretty good program to do that and then use that data along with Jill to make sure we put our roads or schedule our roads for replacement in a timely manner.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, next item is R 68. And that one came from Park and Recreation. Alder Person Caravelo, is that you?
That's me.
And you're over here now?
I'm over here now. Thank you. This is R 68 of 2024. A resolution to adopt the amended Tigon Farms Park master plan, and I so move.
Your second?
I have a second.
Second by Peyton. Alder Person Caravelo.
Okay, so first thing, I just noticed that there's a, in the wording of the resolution in the box at the top, the date says 4/16/2023 is when it was approved by Parks and Rec. And that should be, of course, 2024. And this is a, it is the adopted, to adopt the amended Tigon Farms Park master plan. The original plan had trail parallel or running along Fourth Street from Isham Street down to the Future Road in this development that would be called Orchid Avenue. And the developer came to Parks and Rec requesting that they, basically a deviation from that original plan, to eliminate that piece of trail along Fourth Street that would have run, connecting Isham to Orchid Avenue. And I don't know if now I should, I am not in favor of this.
You can give your reasons and then other committee members can voice their opinions.
Perfect. I, the, it made a lot more sense to me to have this trail continuous down from Isham Street down to connect to the sidewalk at Orchid Avenue. Just because I can't see a reason why you wouldn't want to have that, even though there were concerns about disturbing some natural areas and some potential wildlife stuff. But if you walk down in there, it's not exactly the prettiest kind of essentially ditch that runs north-south there along Fourth Street. So I'm really missing the logic of doing this. I think it could potentially be a public safety thing as well to eliminate this. But I guess I'm an army of one on this.
All right, anybody else from the committee who wish to speak?
Did we have a second on that?
We did, yep. DJ seconded.
Sure, I will speak.
Go ahead. Alder Person Hirsch.
The reason why we decided, well, why I'm in favor of this is that I did look at the wetlands, and they are a very viable wetland. We would have to fill in the wetlands to create this trail, which would affect the natural wetland, the big pond that is circling or the trail is circling around. So the whole beauty of the park, if you fill in the wetland that actually feeds the big pond, that natural feature would be compromised. It's a lot of fill, no pun intended. And it is, I mean, wetlands are in the eye of the beholder, but they do function. As this is a functional wetland. And it's kind of preventing of flooding and rejuvenation of fish populations, you name it, bird habitat. Yes, it doesn't look nice right now, but a lot of times, wetlands don't look nice. It's what they function underneath that makes them special. And there is a running stream from the wetland across the street underneath the road to this. And so you would be filling that in, which isn't good. And I also like the idea of coming off of Isham on the northeast side. And actually, you still have that nice bike path and immediately goes into, I mean, it's not that big of a, it looks like a big space on this map, but it's really not that big of a space, to a nice trail. And that trail is already in existence, and it's wide, and it's already, you know, you have the pond on one side and a good wetland and trees on the other side. If you shorten that by having a trail by the road, you also decrease bird habitat because now you've created another island. I mean, I could go on and on about the wildlife benefits and benefits of wetlands because that's my expertise. But I like this design, and I'm glad that it passed, you know, Parks and Recs. And so I'll leave it at that.
Alder Person Legaki.
President Reeves, who's before me. And I see that it's not in the packet, but I was just going to mention our planning director also, and I'm not on Parks and Rec, but I just attended a bit of the meeting and looked at the Parks and Rec packet. And our planning director also recommended this change because the, and those of you on the committee, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have jurisdiction as a city south of where that trail would extend. So it's really, it's a pretty short trail with, and I thought is a significant disruption. And again, adding more impervious surface. So it didn't seem like the benefits, to me, were worth, you know, it may be a different story if we could, you know, expand, but we don't have the jurisdiction to go south. So it would really be a very short bit of trail, so.
I would like to speak, but I defer to Alder Caravelo.
Okay, well, I just wanted to, to Lisa's point. To Lisa's point, yes, Dunkirk is, if you look at the map, just if you take the map all the way as far south as you can, which there we are, basically at the south piece of Orchid Avenue, there's just a little sliver right there, and that's where Stoughton ends. So Stoughton continues down to and includes Orchid Avenue and just the first lot south. And then after that, it is a different jurisdiction.
Alder Caravelo, at the meeting, well, first of all, you know the trails, and I also have the value of having this amazing bike trail all the way from us to Madison. The dream. Is this, if this passes, does this, does this lessen that? Does it, I'm just not certain in my head of all of the potentials. But if it were to go through the way you want, would that add to the idea of the extension of this great bike trail?
And I don't think this is in any association in any way that I'm aware of to connect anything to like the Greater Lower Hurrah River Trail in its, you know, entirety when it's done. Fourth Street is a well-used north-south route in and out of Stoughton, heading down towards Rock County. You know, Fourth Street turning into Taylor Lane is pretty heavily used. We do have a project that's going to be happening next year on Fourth Street going from Milwaukee Street down to Isham that is going to, that is going to be completely redone next year and going to have trail on it. So instead of that continuing down to Orchid, that will now, just south of Isham, will swing to the west through this park. One of my concerns, well, I guess it's sort of a crystal ball kind of thing as well, is that at some point, this will be urbanized, and this will get curb and gutter and that wetland. There will still be a stream underneath the road, but this will be substantially reconfigured at some point in the, in the future, and who knows the way Dane County keeps growing. But that will very much impact this. So there will be curb and gutter and sidewalk and probably a trail along Fourth Street while we're all still in the city of Stoughton. You never know, but the way the city's growing, the way Dane County's growing, I wouldn't be surprised, so. Not lately. It's true, but it's also going to be a road that's going to need curb and gutter and sidewalk on it. Okay? You have more expertise in this area than do I, apparently.
Anybody else from the committee have any thoughts? Anything from, from staff, from Tony or Brad or, I see Emily from MSA's on here as well. Anything?
Sorry, I just want to point out one thing that through the developers' agreement, they have to connect to Isham. That's not really shown on the map, but they are required to connect to Isham. And as Alder Caravelo mentioned, that in 2025, we are going to be reconstructing Fourth Street. We got bill funding for that, that project. So there will be a 10-foot-wide multi-use path from Isham extending down to Milwaukee Street and then going into Mad Park. And that will connect to the new trail network within Mad Park, subsequently to the riverfront trails as well. So it's all contiguous. Then eventually, this will go over to, through Vigilia Springs to Lowell Park and create a loop. So there is a definite connection to all of this moving forward.
All right, thank you. Alder Person Legaki.
Related to my concern or my question, again, Phil, the Fourth Street is a highway for those of us that bike. It's the launching pad for out of town and heading south for many, many people. If this doesn't go through, is there any plans or would, like the markings of a bike lane, is that discussed? Is that possible? Would this, would this project, the way it is, impact that in any way? How do we make it safer for people as a development comes in?
Currently, Fourth Street, I just think is too narrow, and especially since there's a curve on it. I don't think there's a lot you can do, and especially since just south of this map, it turns into a different jurisdiction. I don't think there's a whole heck of a lot to do there.
Thank you.
Alder Person Peyton?
To that point, we have already approved the development of Magnolia Springs to a certain degree, that there will be more development in the next few years south of Orchid Avenue. So this, this situation with the So this, this situation with the park is one of many that we'll have to discuss over the next several years as they build new houses south of Orchid, which is then going to ask the question of the pedestrian walkways along Fourth, or how people are going to access Fourth. I, for one, agree with this plan, but I also, on the other hand, am concerned about those developments in the future and how pedestrians are going to find easy ways to go down Fourth Street if we don't have proper development of Fourth Street to allow for pedestrian access. So we'll see how that, that runs in the future.
A picture of the, the whole development in case you're trying to get a full perspective of what we're talking about here.
And Orchid on this map is indicated as Future Road B.
That's right, kind of in the middle here, going east and west.
So where the green lot that's on Fourth Street, that it looks like it's marked number oh-four? Or is that just a zero? I'm not quite sure. Oh, Lot Four, yeah, that is basically where Stoughton ends. South of that is, south of that on Fourth Street is Dunkirk.
All the person Butler.
With this map up, and I think that this gets to what DJ was talking about, I'm sympathetic to the concerns about not having a good route for pedestrians and bikes on Fourth. And as we look at redeveloping that at some point, I think that should be a consideration. But with the plans that we know of now, there is that extension of the path heading south through the park, and it serves the known development there, which was, for me, one of the considerations for being in favor of it, as well as a desire not to fill in a wetland.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed?
No.
We have one opposed, that motion carries, good conversation. Next item is R sixty-nine, and this one also came from Park and Recreation. All the person Caravelo.
And this is R sixty-nine of twenty twenty-four, a resolution by the Common Council of the City of Stoughton approving City of Stoughton Park Design Guidelines with additional sustainability guidelines.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by all the person Hirsch, all the person Caravelo.
And this is here, Sustainability Committee just wanted to make sure, they saw that we were going to be approving these guidelines, and wanted to make sure that some of their concerns or additional sustainability measures were included. And we talked with them and added some things that they wanted to see in here.
All right, thank you. And just to add to that, one of the things we wanted to make sure is, we try to incorporate the sustainability ideas, is to make sure that when we hand out documents to developers, they really only have to look at one document. And typically, when we're talking about parks, we give them the Park Design Guidelines, so they understand what the expectations are as far as dedicating parklands. We do have a point system built into the guidelines and things like that to help guide us on how we want the park to lay out, where it needs to be located within the development, and what features we want to preserve. And we thought it would just be advantageous to include the sustainability language in there, so we don't let someone fall through the cracks because they're looking at the wrong document, or they're looking at a different document. All the person Caravelo.
I actually have another, now that I'm looking at this, and it is related, although, you know, I guess directly to this, since these are guidelines, and I don't want to put Rick on the spot, but I think I might be putting Rick on the spot, is since this has guidelines, and like, since Tim has been asking for some definitions of some things tonight that have been helpful, I'm kind of like, you know, why is this guidelines, and what do guidelines do as opposed to ordinances and others? It seems like guidelines is, you know, recommendations as opposed to things that have more teeth to them.
I would agree with that characterization. Guidelines aren't necessarily enforceable. I mean, it's more or less saying like, this is what we would like, and we would recommend you do something like that, but it's not going to have like the teeth of like an official policy or an ordinance. So basically, if you want to, if you want it to be like set in stone, it should be, not characterized as guidelines, I guess. But sometimes the label doesn't matter.
Like, the, the next step from a guidelines would be?
An ordinance.
It would be an ordinance?
Yeah, or, so it depends, like sometimes you're, you have, you can have an ordinance that says, you know, you can put discretion to establish like an official policy, and that policy effectively becomes the law. Otherwise, you would put it, put the requirements directly in the ordinance.
You could also call it standard, and say, and then refer it back to the ordinance.
Sure you have your mic on?
You could also refer to it as a standard, and then refer it back to an ordinance, which says, developers shall, shall follow standards, the city standards for blah, blah, blah.
Right.
And I think on a document like this, I think we go with guidelines to allow you guys to have flexibility, because sometimes you need discretion, because maybe topography or something really prevents you from doing really what you want to do, but you try to get as close to that as you can. And at the end of the day, in the Park Design Guidelines, typically, you're going to have to approve something like a plaid, for example, or a master plan, for another example. And if you're not satisfied that it meets the, kind of the desires or the expectations in the guidelines, you just don't approve it if it doesn't meet the spirit of what you're trying to accomplish. That make sense?
Yes, so, I mean, part of it too depends on the context in which you're applying these. Like, if it's for a developer, I'd say you want it to be more strict, I guess, or like actual like standards that they have to satisfy. If it's a policy that you, as a city, are applying, I would say you want to have more discretion to adjust as things change or to meet different scenarios. So, you know, just because these are labeled as guidelines, doesn't necessarily mean it's a bad thing.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments from Alders? And all the person Legaki.
I appreciate the thoughtful inclusion of sustainability and thinking how we may want to continue to get more inclusive and expand in what is good language. I just, I appreciate this as a motion tonight.
All right, thank you. Anything you want to add, Superintendent King, I see Tony on here. Any thoughts from your end?
Really, I just kind of, kind of to echo what you were, you were saying, I, I look at this as kind of a way to, again, guidelines, but to, to guide us, and based on topography, things can be different. There may not be wetlands available in certain park projects. And a lot of that, a lot of this has just given us a good idea of, for the developers, potential areas that we may accept as parkland dedication. And then for myself and staff, and the Park and Rec Committee kind of helps us with kind of focusing our efforts to what kind of parks we want to design.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries, and entertain the motion to adjourn. Motion by Mieski, a second by Jensen, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? Have a great night.
Signatures please on nomination forms.